20 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to Order. I would ask for Alderman Nate Albert, the police lead us and to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, lady.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Len Conklin?
Present.
Scott Dyke?
Present.
John Verche?
Here.
Barbara Scoler?
Claudia Gazal?
Yes, here.
Tina Oberlin?
Present.
Marco Coladepietro?
Here.
Nate Albert?
Here.
Joe Kubal? Barbara Scoler? Just doing roll call, Barbara. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Ray Solomon, Mayor of the City of Crest Hill. I am remote from my home residence this evening. I would like to thank Ward Four Alderman Nate Albert, who is live in person at Crest Hill City Hall located at 1610 Plainfield Road. That is per state statute and per the Open Meetings Act that an elected official needs to be present at City Hall during the correspondence of this meeting. We do not have a business promotion for this evening. And all of the other, all their men and women and department heads are remote from their own residence also. First before us on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes of the December 7 Crest Hill City Council Meeting Motion Would Be In Order.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Coladepietro, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the December 7, 2020 City Council Meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler? Barbara Scoler? I take it as a yes because I can see you say yes. John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you also have before you the, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on December 14, 2020, motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Coladepietro, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on December 14, 2020. Questions or comments?
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler? I can't hear you, Barbara, but I saw you say yes. John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Or maybe going forward, you could just give a thumbs up or thumbs down since we can't hear you. Fair enough. All right, moving on to our agenda to our city administrator Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have four agenda items for consideration this evening. I am going to turn the first three over to Attorney Mike Stiff. He's going to give you a rundown and overview of those three items as they are all related and related to the disconnection of the property just north of Renwick Road. So with that, Mike, if you would please review those.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As Heather alluded to, the first three documents that our city administrator agenda items are to effectuate the settlement of the RRI, Renwick Road Investments litigation. As was discussed in prior executive sessions, these documents reflect what the council approved as far as the last settlement negotiation. So let me take them in order. The first document that should be in your packet is the actual settlement agreement. That settlement agreement is titled General Release and Settlement of All Claims. It's basically a standard settlement and release that provides for mutual releases whereby the city releases the RRI owners from any claims resulting from their ownership of the property. And they in turn release the city and all of its elected officials, agents, et cetera, from any liability for any of the claims made in the litigation. So that's the primary portion that is the release. The meat and potatoes of the document are the additional settlement term. So basically, what this litigation was to seek disconnection of the property. We were going to submit and agree in order to Judge Anderson that resolves the litigation whereby everything will be disposed of and he will order the RRI parcel from the City of Crest Hill. Once that is done, the Duke Realty, who is not a party to the litigation, but has indicated that as part of this global settlement agreement, they will make the $350,000 one-time lump sum payment by wire transfer to the city within 15 days of the entry of that dismissal order, which will be submitted to the court for its approval sometime either this week or first thing next week. If you recall, one of the terms of the settlement agreement was Duke make an offer of at least a square foot to Rhonda Jenkins. That offer was made and apparently a deal was struck between Duke and Jenkins. So this release simply says that that part of the agreement has been taken care of and that they've reached an agreement and that the city will agree to disconnect Jenkins upon Jenkins' request. And that's going to be the third document that we'll get to shortly. So in addition to the mutual releases, the disconnection by agreement, the payment by Duke of the $350,000, it also requires as part of this intergovernmental agreement with Romeoville be entered. If you recall, you know, Romeoville has obligations to share taxes on this. Duke and Romeoville resisted being party to this release document because they are not parties to the litigation. So we're doing it this way whereby everything's getting approved at once. So the the rest of the release and settlement agreement, boilerplate language, which I'll explain if there are any questions. But otherwise, if you look to Exhibit A, that's the intergovernmental agreement. The release calls for the approval of that in substantially the same form as what's attached. So with that, I'll entertain any questions on the general release and settlement of all claims.
Mike, just on a couple of these documents, the closing page where the signatures are affixed, once again, they have the Village of Crest Hill instead of the City of Crest Hill. I hope that-
That's because the Romeoville attorney must have not changed that. I know I caught it before, so that will obviously be changed. But aside from that, any other questions?
You want to take these individually then, Mike, or?
I'll just talk about all three and then I think you guys can take it in turn and vote on it. Unless you prefer to do it otherwise.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, so then the, the next document is the same as the attachment to the settlement agreement. So it's the intergovernmental agreement and I've already changed that Village of Crest Hill on the signature page to City of Crest Hill. And I'll send that back to Rich Vogel, who's the attorney for Romeoville. This intergovernmental agreement was already approved by Romeoville's Village Board, I believe at their December 2 meeting. It was approved contingent upon any subsequent review and approvals by their village attorney and their village administrator. I've spoken with the attorney and the document you have before you is what I've looked through and vetted, other than obviously the correction to City of Crest Hill rather than Village. But basically that calls for, you know, there's a bunch of boilerplate, but the meat and potatoes of that is Section 2.2 and 2.3, which calls for the city to agree to disconnect the entirety of the RRI property as well as the disconnection of the Jenkins property if an agreement is reached. We did receive the petition by Rhonda Jenkins to disconnect voluntarily. That'll be the third document, given the fact that Rhonda had been going back and forth. We wanted to make sure that she didn't have cold feet and at the last minute request to withdraw her petition. So basically, 2.2 and 2.3 calls for the disconnection of both properties, provided that Jenkins has requested it, which she now has. It says that the village or the city will not, the village will annex and under the annexation agreements, which will be separate annexation agreements with Rhonda Jenkins and/or Duke or RRI and/or Duke, will show that the real estate taxes, at least the municipal portion of the real estate taxes, will be shared on a 50/50 basis with Crest Hill up until such time as the city gets $500,000 in real estate taxes. The second term is 2.4. That's the stormwater management. It basically says that Romeoville will undertake to use its best efforts to alleviate any of the stormwater issues that are currently occurring when it goes ahead and approves the design of the improvement of the RRI. It doesn't have anything to do with that parcel to the, to the east. So if the city still has issues with the drainage from that, that's not covered by this. So the city has a ability to move forward against either the property owner or the developer of that property. So this is separate and apart from that. But it basically obligates Romeoville to work under the Will County Stormwater Management Ordinance to alleviate and make sure that the development of the RRI property doesn't cause any stormwater issues south of Renwick. And then the third thing is Section C under 2.4. And that's what the council requested be inserted with respect to in the future, when Pinnacle Drive is actually constructed and intersects with Renwick, that the city bear no cost in traffic control devices and that be borne either by Romeoville or the developer. So that's the second document, which again, aside from the changes that we've made here tonight, is identical to the exhibit that's attached to the release settlement. And then finally, the latter document. Back on November 20th, Rhonda Jenkins pursuant to her agreement with Duke submitted a petition to voluntarily disconnect her property, which is about seven acres from the city. If you recall, her property was annexed back in January of 2018. We provided her with a, an assurance that if the RRI case was either unsuccessful as far as the city was concerned or in this case, there was a settlement, we would let her out of that without objecting. So she has filed this petition voluntarily disconnect. Under the statute, it has to be received for 30 days before you can act on it. We received it on the 20th of November, so the 30th day was yesterday. So basically, the third document is an ordinance that basically disconnects, just as you annexed it in 2018, her property from the city. And that puts it back to unincorporated Will County until such time as the annexations go through. But none of this is contingent upon the annexation. At least the payment by Duke is not contingent upon the annexation. That was one of the things they wanted to make the payment contingent on. We resisted that, so they're going to make the payment in January by wire transfer. And then once the annexation takes place pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement that's hopefully approved tonight and already approved by Romeoville, the 50/50 tax sharing will take place going forward. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or entertain some discussion.
Okay, any questions from city council to Mike Stiff in regards to the three agenda items that have been discussed? Okay, hearing none. Let's go back to the, to the first agenda item under the city administrator. I'll ask for a motion for the settlement agreement between the City of Crest Hill and Renwick Road Investments.
I'm moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Coladepietro, seconded by Alderman Dyke in regards to the settlement agreement between the City of Crest Hill and Renwick Road Investments. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal? Joe Kubal? Joe, can you hear me? Joe?
He was muted.
Joe, this is, this is a vote for the settlement agreement, the first agenda item. If you can just give us a thumbs up or thumbs down since we cannot hear you.
Okay, I think we lost Joe Kubal. Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The second agenda item that we have before us is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Village of Romeoville. Motion would be in order.
They'll move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Scoler, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Village of Romeoville. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal? Joe, if you can hear me, you could do a thumbs up and we lost Joe again. Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the third agenda item in regards to this is an ordinance disconnecting certain territory to the City of Crest Hill, Illinois, located at 20318 West Renwick Road. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Coladepietro, seconded by Alderman Albert for an ordinance disconnecting certain territory to the City of Crest Hill, Illinois, located at 20318 West Renwick Road. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal? Looks like we lost connection to Joe Kubal again. Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1854.
And thank you very much, Mike, for doing the background explanation on that. And you're free to go for this evening unless you wanted to stick around. But with that, I do have one more agenda item for council's consideration. This was discussed at several work sessions over the last couple of months. It is an ordinance amending the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances in relation to rental inspections. And just for everybody's clarification, this does not produce any substantive changes to the rental inspection program. It will remain per council's direction at an annual inspection and the inspection fee will be just $50 per inspection. This just does some cleanup items to some of the language within the ordinance itself as well as repealing any of the references to crime-based, crime-based issues with any rental properties in the city as we are prohibited per statute from tying those items together. So it's repealing those things that we cannot enforce and just cleaning up some of the language within Chapter 15.09. So with that, I would seek approval this evening.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Scoler for an ordinance amending the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances in relation to rental inspections. Questions or comments for the motion?
Mayor, just, just one quick comment. Heather, is there any way that we can kind of get an update, maybe six months from now, on how many more rentals that we've actually gotten on the rolls for inspection?
Absolutely.
Like we talked about- All right, go ahead.
Sorry, we're just under about 800 right now, I believe, was the number I got. I know that the building department is working on trying to get an updated list on that. But we'll make sure to kind of give you an update over at least the last six months where it's gone, started and ended.
Okay, because like we talked about at the work session, that seems to be the real issue, just the people that aren't registered as rental, rental homes. That's where some of the issues are coming from. So thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1855.
Thank you. That was the final agenda item I had for approval this, this evening informationally. As we're transitioning staff members in the Community Development Department, I did just want to give a couple of updates there. As everybody may or may not be aware, I just wanted to remind everybody that Russo's Italian Deli did open in the City of Crest Hill on Plainfield Road. So please check that out. The sign for Goofy G's Ice Cream Parlor on Plainfield Road has also been up for a while. They are working through some permitting and final construction items. We are hoping that they are ready to go by the summer of 2021. So they are still moving forward with their project as well. And there will not be a work session next week due to the holidays, but we will continue our work sessions in January. Current items slated for the January 11th work session include the logo presentation, 2020, 2021 revenue analysis, Cardinal Gardens Assisted Living Facility, ComEd easement agreement, and the rest of the topics are still being finalized. And with that, I would like to wish both the elected officials and the staff and the residents a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I would entertain any questions that you have.
Heather, since Alderman Kubal has joined us back over his technical problems earlier, would it be advisable to ask the city clerk to ask his vote on the first three agenda items?
If he would like to clarify his vote on those items, that's fine. Obviously, they were already approved regardless of his vote, but certainly he can clarify those.
Yeah, I, I am going to vote yes and I did hear everything.
Did you for the, okay, so it'd be for the settlement agreement, for the intergovernmental agreement and for the disconnection of the city on Renwick? You have yes on all of those?
Yes, yes on all three.
Okay, it's noted. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of, any questions of city administrator?
Yeah, Heather, how is the small business grant going? Is our filing?
We, I, I know for sure we've gotten at least one application in. The deadline is not till the end of this year, so we'll, we'll collect them all at that time. So I have not sorted through all of them yet, but I know that we are getting them in.
Thank you.
And Heather, just for the public's clarification about the Essence Suites on Weber Road?
Yeah, absolutely. I know that there was some public interest regarding that. Right now, we have just received a demolition permit for that property. We do not yet have a build-out permit or an application on file for what this business will be. I am in the process of reaching out to them. I have not touched base with them to this point, but all indications are that that will be just salon-type suite, with salon-type suites, which are essentially, essentially smaller places for individual stylists to rent out. They have no space in there to actually do any sort of hotel-like accommodations or those type of suites. So hopefully that does clear up any misunderstanding that may have existed. But again, once we receive an actual build-out permit from them, we will get a little bit more information and pass that along.
Heather, I did, I did speak with the people running that and they told me that that's exactly what it was going to be, different little individual sites for beauticians with two loft areas. And it was going to have a lunchroom and restrooms, et cetera. He gave me the prices and everything, so that is exactly what it's going to be. I talked to him for about 15 minutes last week.
Right, that more individualized setup, almost like an independent contractor as opposed to that single business.
They'll each rent their space, either the smaller ones or the upstairs with the lofts, yes. For, for here, Carrie, yeah.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on to Public Works Department, our Public Works Director, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item for us this evening. Last week, or last week at the work session, council was presented with options for construction and rehabilitation of the West Plant from Strand, city staff and PMA. It was council's straw vote to recommend moving forward with the project in one phase with that estimated cost of $36 million funded through the IEP, a low-interest loan. That dollar amount included estimates for $31.4 million for construction, 2.7 million for construction management and 1.9 million for design. This evening, I bring in front of you the proposal from Strand for the design of the West Sewage Treatment Plant Rehabilitation for a design fee of $1,928,000. That would include 13,200 hours of Strand's time. It's roughly 176 blueprint pages. And the breakdown on how many hours per each discipline is on the memo attached. I would be happy to answer any questions in regards to this proposal.
Any questions of Mark in regards to the recommendation? This again was discussed at length at the December 14th work session. Any questions or comments from council? Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Who, who made? Was that Alderman Kubal?
Yeah, myself and Tina, I think at the same time, so.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Kubal, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin in regards to the West Sewage Treatment Plant Design Proposal with Strand Associates. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Coladepietro?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that, I have no further agenda items, but I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Mark, could you just kind of give a little bit of a report for people watching about, you know, the, the state of the West Treatment Plant and some of the, some of the facility's age and, and stuff like that? I mean, this is the process of spending a lot of money and it's good to just kind of report on what it's for?
Yeah, so the, the West Sewage Treatment Plant was built originally in 1960. It went through a small upgrade in 1984 and 1990, the early 1990s. Money of the equipment is still in the original, in the original state from the early six, early to late 60s. At this point, it's, it's very difficult for us to get any parts electrically or mechanically over there. The plant originally was built, basically half the size it was now in the 60s and in the early 90s, it was doubled in size from what it was to then. And to this day, we're, we're hitting our loading capacity at this time. The, the plant is as old as this city is. So it's time for a complete rehab- as old as this city is, so it's time for a complete rehab and to give this city the amount of loading capacity that it needs for the next twenty to twenty-five years, so.
So when the upgrade was done in nineteen ninety, Mark, what were the projections for expectancy on that?
Uh, so the twenty to thirty years, all, always for treatment plants are in the twenty to thirty years. Now, with today's technology, we are, we are getting a little longer lifespan than we did in the sixties and the, in the eighties and the nineties. So hopefully with this rehabilitation in the next, next two to three years, we, we do get a thirty to thirty-three-year lifespan and, you know, it's, it's helping the residents of Crest Hill for, for that long as well.
Well, I just think it's good for the public to understand that at the time that was last renovated, the projection was twenty years, I'm, I'm assuming. And we're at the thirty-plus year now, correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we, that, that plant, that plant has, has done its time. It's, it's gave great benefit to the residents of the City of Crest Hill since early nineties, and it's, it's ready for an upgrade.
Right, but I, I just want the people to understand that because this is a very big project and it's a lot of money. And people need to understand why it's so important, but they also need to understand that we've surpassed the life expectancy of this upgrade by ten years. So we're, we're on the last thread in, in that we can go on with that plan.
Yes, we are, yes.
Well, I think that's important for everyone to know. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mark? Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I hope everyone has a great Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Community Development Department, you do have a report in your packets. And then city administrator went through the updates for that department. Moving on to Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have any agenda items this evening. I did want to update city council on our hiring process. The academy that we do send recruits to the Cook County Police Academy has, at the last minute, gained approval from the Illinois Training and Standards Board to run an academy starting January fourth. Luckily, we had somebody through the process that we were moving along. We do have that person potentially available for that. There's one final exam that they had to cross over. But I also have two other candidates that we spoke about earlier who are current police officers that their tentative start date will be January eighteenth, so that'd be a total of three at this time that we can probably get on board in twenty twenty-one. I'd be happy to entertain any questions and happy holidays.
Any questions? Thanks, Chief.
I do. What is the update on that stop sign? We've talked about it.
Yes, I have, I, I did talk to that residence that we talked about. I did speak with her. I also did, she pointed me in the direction of another resident that I want to speak with. I've stopped there in two different occasions. I left a business card to have that person contact me back. I will try to get there. I want to get their input as well. They're right there at that intersection, so as soon as I get that, I'll let you know. I'll, I'll give you a call and let you know what we find out.
Yeah, I just want to say we would appreciate it, you know, giving some feedback.
That's fine there. It was planned from the beginning. There's supposed to be a stop sign. I don't see why it's taking that long, you know?
I understand. I, I did try to look at, at the plans. I pulled the plans for that subdivision. I did not see any traffic plans to show any of the traffic signs or signals for that subdivision. I even called the developer who developed it, Zauza, and they didn't have anything available, and I called the engineering firm as well, and they were unable to locate that as well. That's around what we did, did speak about, but I was not able to locate any plans that I could say, yeah, you know what, this was planned in the beginning. But as soon as I get that interview done with that person, I will call you directly and I'll let you know and we'll get that thing on the agenda.
We would appreciate hearing back from that.
Thank you.
I just feel, and I, as I told you, and I appreciate everything that you do, but and I did mention, we have worked for that requested a sign that even the resident didn't even request it. There was no need. This one, resident wants a stop sign. You know, we have to find another way to get this process a little bit faster, a little bit sooner. I mean, three months, have the speed. It's just, it's just aggravating, you know, and I told you that a couple of weeks ago, and now we're still waiting and we keep waiting. Now, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna have another meeting, so how long more we're gonna take before we run into the council? Like, why is it so hard for the council to approve a stop sign when it's requested from the, from the resident? That's my opinion again.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report, the agenda item is for an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one for the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Just some opening comments from the mayor. We did have a work session in regards to the property tax levy, I believe it was November ninth. And then the ordinance before you this evening. Last year, the current, the current tax year, the rate for our city was point five six four seven per one thousand. And we are estimating that the tax rate for this year to be estimated at point five five four seven, so a little bit lower than last year. The good news is that our tax rate hasn't, has decreased every year since two thousand and fourteen. Yes, six years in the City of Crest Hill. Comparing ourselves to other municipalities in Will County, there are thirty-eight municipalities in Will County with number one being the lowest tax rate and number thirty-eight being the highest tax rate in the county. The City of Crest Hill, we are actually number seventeen out of thirty-eight communities for our tax, estimated tax rate from last year. Again, there are twenty-five communities that, well, let me, let me say this, with the, with the twenty-five percent property tax rebate check that you have gotten now for coming up on your eighth year, with that reduction of the twenty-five percent, we were actually number thirteen out of thirty-eight communities in the city, in the county of Will. So there are twenty-five communities that are paying more for their property taxes in Will County. And there are twelve communities paying less than what the City of Crest Hill is paying. Our rate is at six point fourth, or six point four three percent of the property tax goes to the city for Crest Hill for operations. And then you take in, in regards to that, you take twenty-five percent again off for the rebate check. And you're paying four point eight three percent of your entire property tax bill goes to the City of Crest Hill. And again, that's how we realize that we are the thirteenth ranked out of thirty-eight communities in the county. Our bond rating was recently raised a year ago from double A three to double A, which is number three out of twenty-one rankings for bond ratings. This is also the highest ranking in the city's sixty-year history, the highest one that we have ever had at double A. This equates to a tremendous amount of savings on our, all of our future projects, especially for the, for the water treatment plant also going forward. So we are, as a city, we are financially strong and we are healthy. We will continue to move forward in a fiscally responsible manner for all of our taxpayers. The city council, city staff, the entire, all the city employees should be very proud of all the accomplishments that we have made over the last twelve years. We should also be very proud of the police pension fund. We have made tremendous strides in the police pension fund. In two thousand and fifteen, our, our police pension was funded at fifty-five percent, and in two thousand and twenty, our police pension fund is funded at nine percent. The most, the improvements that are most noticeable from this fourteen percent increase over the last six years is first and foremost, the great investments have been made by the Police Pension Board over the years. The City of Crest Hill has contributed extra monies for the last five years now for the police pension fund. The State of Illinois says that all municipalities should be funded by ninety percent by two thousand and forty. And based on the projections that we have made here with everything that is, that we have been doing for the last five, six years, we will be funded one hundred percent by two thousand thirty-eight. So again, my thanks to city council, through city staff, to the treasurer's office, all the employees. Because this is everybody working in the same direction to make all of these accomplishments. So before I ask for a motion, I will certainly ask our city treasurer, Glenn Conklin, and our financial supervisor, Ashley Motica, if they would like to add any comments before I ask for the motion.
I've nothing to add.
Okay, thanks, Glenn. Ashley, anything?
Nope, as stated before, you know, we're financially as strong as the city, so we look, we look forward to continuing moving in that direction in the future.
Thank you. Motion would be in order from council?
Don't move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one for the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Also, a general sum, summary of the amounts levied. The general fund is one million five hundred thousand. The police pension fund levied at eight hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars. The Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, twenty thousand dollars. Social Security Tax Fund, twenty thousand dollars. Total tax level levy for all funds, two million three hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Marco Cody Petro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Jarvis Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yeah.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is one eight five six.
Thank you. That is all of my agenda items. I certainly do just want to wish all of, all our residents a very blessed and Merry Christmas and a very happy and healthy New Year. Get your vaccine when it does come out from, from the Will County Health Department. And please continue to wear your masks and to be socially distanced. With that, I will try to entertain any questions that anyone may have. Hearing none, we'll move on to the city, city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Beck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items this evening, but I would like to wish all the residents, council, staff at City Hall, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope everyone stays safe and healthy.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Beck. Moving on to moving on to treasurer's report. Our city treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to report regular overtime payroll from November twenty-third, two thousand twenty until December sixth of two thousand twenty in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. I look for your approval on our list of bills, which in that same timeframe totals five hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
All right, I heard Alderwoman Sclaire on a motion. Who was second?
I was.
Seconded by Alderwoman Overland. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the roll call, please?
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Marco Cody Petro?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Jarvis Sclaire?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all for that, and I'd like to do this with council and staff and other elected officials as well as all of our residents, which have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and encourage you to step aside the madness for a little bit and the chaos and just reflect on the many blessings that we have around us, all around us, and hope you get to spend as much time as you can in the right way with your families and stay safe and healthy. Love you guys and good night.
Thanks, Glenn. Moving on, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business, anybody? Committee Leas on reports?
Yep. We're going to present the, in a little different fashion this year, the Holiday Lights winners. Unfortunately, we can't have them there to get their awards, but we, we, I will be delivering them to them. However, we'll start with our honorable mention. We had two families that tied for that. One is Rhonda and Robert Brooker at twenty thirty Green Gold. The other one is the Brown family at eighteen oh eight Highland. Both beautiful. I, I haven't seen them in person, but by the pictures, just gorgeous. The elves told me this year it was very, very difficult because the homes were all so beautiful, so everyone should be very proud with all the effort they put in. But they will be winning a little, a little goody bag from Newmark with a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate from one of our restaurants here in Crest Hill. The restaurants participating, Luciano's, Marishka's, Marshalloni's and Firewater, they all have gift certificates in here that people are going to win. So congratulations to the Brookers and the Browns. Great job. Then our next winner is our fifth place winner, Michael Heinrich. That's eighteen oh four Root Street. He, he is going to win two twenty-five-dollar gift cards for our lovely restaurants and his goody bag. And once again, a beautiful, absolutely beautiful home. These pictures, thanks Nate, these pictures are beautiful. And they're also all gonna win one of these beautiful ornaments that I'll hold up. I don't know if you guys can see it. Thanks to Nate's wife Jill, who, who designed these and got these ordered. They're so cute. So the winners are all gonna get one of these as well. And then we'll move on to our fourth place winner, who is, oh, my neighbor, John Badisich, twenty-two twenty Hess Drive. He will be winning, he will get three twenty-five-dollar gift certificates in his goody bag. And congratulations, John. I love the tree on the roof. I used to do that myself years ago. That's a lot of work. Beautiful. Third place, we had another tie, and which one are you putting up first? Okay. Five thirty-two Elsie, that was Kevin Schultz. What a gorgeous display. These homes are so beautiful. I can't even, I can't wait to go see them. They are going to the tie, they tied and they are going to win four twenty-five-dollar gift certificates in their goody bags, so that's a hundred dollar total. And the second winner at that is Maria and Ozio. Let's see if I say this right. Laura, Maria and Ozio Laura, and they live at two one five four six Gray Wing Drive. Gosh, another beautiful house. Just look at it. So congratulations to them. Our second place winner is Mark Patrick, two zero four two zero Spruce Lane. He is gonna win a hundred and twenty-five-dollar Food for Less gift certificate in his lovely green bag from Newmark, so congratulations to him. And then, drumroll, please, our first place winner. Oh, he's gonna be thrilled. I see this guy, Richard Schible, two one one two Linwood Street. What a house. It's decorated all the way around, I was told. It's just gorgeous. So he's going to win a hundred and fifty-dollar Visa gift card from Newmark Credit Union. So I, I just want to thank all of the people who put entries in. We had more this year than ever before. The elves all said it was a tough job to pick the winners. Everybody's house was so beautiful. Again, I want to thank Nate's wife for designing the ornaments and ordering them. And I want to thank Nate for taking all these wonderful pictures so that everybody could see them. It's so nice to be able to see the visual with the names. And all the winners, I will be delivering them, your little bags to you to your home. So once again, congratulations. Nate, you want to add anything?
Yeah, maybe if I could, Tina. I just
Uh, yeah, maybe if I could, Tina. I just, you know, I know how much work goes into these and it is just so impressive, especially, uh, Mr. Shible here, who I know has decorated for years and decorates for Halloween. But yeah, every, every angle of his house is, is decorated. You can see it from Grandview Street. You can see it from Green Gold. I mean, it's, it's really, looks nice. Um, the second place winner, as far as the arch is over the driveway, that's a huge job. Of course, Grinch there stealing the lights off of the roof, very creative. Uh, third place, the, uh, uh, Laura family, um, that you can see from Gaylord, uh, Street as you're driving down Gaylord Road. You can see it, uh, it's right on the other side of the pond. The pond actually reflects some of the light, uh, some nights. So it's really, really impressive. Uh, Mr. Schultz on Elsie Avenue also, third place. Uh, I know that most of those are handmade, uh, decorations that he's done throughout the years. I saw him earlier this season and he told me that he was adding a few more. So, uh, very, very impressive. You know, the pictures don't really do it justice. So go out and see him if you can. Uh, Mr. Badisich, as far as that tree on the, on the roof, I know my kids and my wife really enjoyed that. That is a tremendous amount of work. He's got a pretty steep, steep roof. So that's, that's impressive. Uh, fifth place, Mr. Mr. Heinrich, lived right around the corner from me. And, uh, I saw him out there pounding all those stakes in the ground and mounting those things. Uh, he's got a couple of inflatables that my kids love. He has one of the inflatables where Santa's in an outhouse and they always wait for the door to open to see Santa popping out. So very, very cool. Um, and then the two honorable mentions, the Brokers on Green Gold Street, uh, it's one of those things, oh, you go past, go past that one, Heather. Um, the, uh, the Brokers on, on Green Gold Street, they, uh, have this synchronized music. So you can actually drive past her, you know, roll down her window, listen to the music. And I know that if they had a little bit more square footage there on the front, that they would probably be spreading out. Maybe they gotta ask their neighbors to, to take a little real estate. And then the other one there is, um, the one on, uh, Highland Avenue, eighteen oh eight, Mr. Pan. It's, it's impressive driving on the street, uh, because it's, it's clean. It's nice. All the, all the lines are straight. Um, it, it just, it looks great. So congrats to all the winners and, and we had, uh, eighteen entries this year. I think that's most ever, right, Tina?
Um, it's the most in a long time. In the first few years, we had more, but in the last probably four years, five years, this is the most. So I was very excited about that. And by the way, Nate, we, we forgot to mention how beautiful your house was. And I know I saw something in one of the newspapers or patch or something where they had picked your house as the house of the day or something. So, um, I know you can't enter it because you're part of this, but there, there's your house. Your house is so adorable and everybody just loves seeing it. So, uh, congratulations to you, Nate. That's a, I know that's a lot of work. Mine used to look like that. I know.
Well, thank you, Tina. Yeah, it's, I, I say it's all for the kids, but then most of you realize that I've been this long before the kids were born. I enjoy it. It brightens the holiday a little bit for all the people that, that need to be here. So, thank you.
Okay, congratulations to all the winners. Uh, um, I, I see that there are a lot of homes that are decorated because of the nice weather that we had this year. So, uh, thanks for adding to the beauty of, uh, the city of Crest Hill. Uh, thanks to the committee for all the hard work, uh, that went into the, uh, the selection process here. And again, to all the winners and to everybody that, uh, has decorated for this, uh, this year, uh, thank you very much and congratulations. Anybody else under, uh, Committee Liaison Reports?
Ray, I've got a couple of, uh, notes from the Park District here for, uh, Crest Hill residents. Uh, Tuesday, January fifth, from one to three, the Park District is gonna have a, uh, job fair uh, over at the Delwood, uh, Community Center, one to three, January fifth on Tuesday for any of the, uh, uh, younger people that are looking for seasonal summer jobs. Uh, that would be the day to go. And I want to, uh, give a reminder, we've said this a couple of times, but, uh, the, uh, Park District's gonna be celebrating their seventy-fifth, uh, anniversary again, New Year's Eve with a fireworks display at Hassard Park. It starts at seven o'clock. And, uh, I'd like to wish everybody a, a happy holiday as well. That's it, Ray.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to City Council comments. Anything you'd like to share with, uh, uh, the listening audience this evening? We'll begin with Ward one, Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish all Council, all the residents and their families of the city, uh, blessed, happy, merry, however you celebrate Christmas this year, and a happy, healthy and prosperous New Year.
Alderman Verche?
Well, if you, if you celebrate, uh, Christmas, a happy Christmas and a healthy and, huh, healthy and safe New Year too.
Ward two, Alderwoman Skler?
Congratulations to the Christmas, Christmas, like winners. Um, that to everybody who participated because you're actually all, and also I would like to wish everyone a Merry, very Merry Christmas and also a Happy New Year. Stay safe, everyone.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Well, I wish, um, all the City Council, the resident and all the city staff a very blessed, um, Christmas. Let's take a moment and think about over three hundred thousand people have passed because of COVID and just the fact that we're still here, that is above and beyond blessing. So it's just, uh, just enjoy, enjoy every moment. And, um, my heart breaks for so many people that won't be able to put the Christmas tree or decorate their home or share a meal with their loved ones. Um, that itself, it's like beyond blessing. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
Ward three, Alderwoman Oberlin?
Well, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Joyeux Noël, Pleased Navidad, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate. As Claudia said, please celebrate it with your loved ones and treasure these moments. Um, we all know how quickly it can end and it's really important. I, I, I lost a good friend just recently and my last conversation with her, I, I, I just thank God, my last conversation with her, I told her how much she meant to me and how much I loved her and I will never forget that. I had that opportunity. So make sure you let the people you know, uh, you love, that you, you love them and you cherish them and say to them while you can. It's very important. So please have a wonderful season.
Alderman Cody Pietro?
Uh, I'd just like to congratulate all the winners, uh, that decorated and those that didn't decorate and those that didn't even enter. Uh, thanks for sharing, uh, the joy of the season with everyone by, by decorating. Um, it's great and people get to drive by and, and enjoy your hard work. Also Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, uh, to everyone, city staff, residents, council. Look forward to a great and prosperous New Year for two thousand twenty-one as we put this year behind us.
Ward four, Alderman Albert?
Yeah, I certainly want to wish, uh, everybody here on our, on our Zoom call, uh, happy holidays. Resident out there, um, I also want to give, uh, you know, a little shout out to, to Claudia. She, her home is beautifully decorated inside and out.
Hey, so.
Has lightened and she has definitely made our Zoom meetings more festive with her, uh, holiday background. So appreciate, appreciate it. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thanks. She said, you didn't say anything about my green.
Alderman Kubal, anything else?
Uh, nothing else, Ray. Just once again, wish everybody, everybody that's listening right now, happy holidays.
Okay, public comment, uh, to the City Clerk. Did anybody, uh, leave an email or Dropbox, anything?
No, there's no request to the City Clerk for any public comments via the Dropbox or any emails to myself.
And just for the record, anyone listening would like to make, uh, public comment, please state your name for the record. Your address is optional. But the record showed that no one has, uh, chosen to speak under public comment. To our, uh, City Administrator, Heather, is there a need for an executive session?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Check it.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for an adjournment. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Cody Petro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Barbara Skler?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Last motion of the year, motion carries.
And thank you once again to Alderman Albert for, uh, being in person at City Hall this evening. Meeting is adjourned at eight, eight, eight o'clock PM. Um, thank you and good evening.